Hello, everyone, and welcome to our special wrap up edition of our debrief episode of Channel seventy one news. Throughout the city council session, we are always meeting over Zoom every week to chat about what's happening in the city, what's happening in the city government. But at the end of every session of city council, we decide to come together in person to chat about about the like the entire six months or so of city council meetings going over the highs and lows. And this is that episode. So we're here at James's place who's kind enough to shares a boat with us. We got some baked goods. We have some tea, have a little tea party chatting about wall thing. And so, yeah, how is it gonna go? We're just gonna go over some highs and lows over the past six months in the city and the in the city council as well. Doesn't have to necessarily be politics or city council. And we're just gonna go over that. We'll probably talk a little bit about the election as well. It's coming up. And so, past six months, we should talk about the highs and the lows that we've had.
If I had to throw one out there, just like, since you led with that, hi is definitely the number of people that have all pulled papers to run for office. It's nice to see so many new faces and I've seen have a lot of people that I'm very excited for running and all people but I am a lot less excited for running on a toast, so.
I agree one hundred percent. I think in one of my group chats, someone said that this year has more non incumbents running than ever in Wall things history. I pushed back immediately and said that two thousand seventeen had more people, but preparing for this, I decided to to look into that. And what I what I found was that in two thousand seventeen, there were twelve non incumbents running for ward seats, five non incumbents running at large and one non incumbent running for school committee. In two thousand twenty three, you have eight non incumbents running for ward seats, three non incumbents running for school committee and six non incumbents running for at large, seven if you count George. Are we counting George? You probably have to count George. Yeah, you probably have to count George. Okay, so if you count George and you call and you count Paul, which which I guess I am.
Yeah, Brasco and Thor nine dude Logan.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm counting. I'm counting rolling the books. So if you count all those people, then it is a top for eighteen non incumbents running in two thousand seventeen, eighteen non incumbents running in two thousand twenty three. I'm not including Jonathan and Gray Champagne because there was it wasn't a mayoral race in two thousand seventeen. So for likewise elections, it's tied, but if you're discounting for overall amount of candidates, regardless of position, then twenty twenty three does have more non incumbents running than any other election in Wall things history. So definitely a high. I'm gonna say hi, hi, hi. Very happy about that. Do you guys know why? In two thousand seventeen, easy, it was the Trump Bernie effect. That is why there were so many non incumbents running. You had a lot of like national organizations popping up, trying to get people to run for office. But I think nowadays, there's much less of that. There's much less pushing for people to run for office. It still exists and it's still more than pre two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, but as much it's much less despite that disproportionately often has many more people running for office than the surrounding cities. Can you guess why? I don't have an answer. I'm just putting this out there.
I don't know. That's I think a lot of it love it like energy. I've seen these people that have been mobilized by like how difficult it is to rent in the city and like we'll notice and see just from looking at it like the price to rent versus like what the average income is and the reaction to the the reaction to the notification ordinance, but also the the energy behind the notification ordinance, like that's people energized on both sides and I think that there's just things are a little more tense here for whatever reason.
Yeah, I think everyone is understanding that just the this is standard of living is just going down everywhere and for a lot of people anyway, I guess I shouldn't say everyone. Some people are sure certainly doing fine, but for a majority of people, things are costing more and wages aren't going up. And so people are getting frustrated. And so I think that definitely has something to do with it. I think people are just kind of dissatisfied with the trajectory of the city.
Yeah, I mean, you can say that, but like the vast majority of the people running, including the incumbents are still like fairly well off people.
One hundred percent.
Like and owning their own home.
Yeah.
Like you really have to be to run for office and it takes resources.
I mean, yeah, if you want to do well, it has to be a full time job, but I mean, you really don't have to.
The bar is very low.
You can just there's plenty of city counselors that just show up.
Some don't.
Some some just don't. Some just don't. Speaking of all Brasco coming coming back to to run again. So, yeah, if we're gonna stay on elections, I looked up some more things. This is set the stage for for what it means to campaign in wall time right now. If you're if you're looking at at large and this year you have so many so many at large candidates right now. Every at large candidate is vying for pretty much the bottom spot. Of course, you would like to be the top, you know, top top vote getter in the entire city council, but you would settle if you're not coming. You'd settle for last place one hundred percent. And this year, this last place finisher for at large, you're probably they're probably gonna get around forty nine hundred votes. That's what you're going for. Huge number. It's massive. If you're Jonathan Paz running for for mayor, that number more looks more like six thousand, probably a little more than that. Actually, I probably if I were to guess and you can put me on the record, I guess it's gonna be sixty one fifty to win. If it's close. If you're in Ward one, you're looking for about nine hundred and fifty votes. If you're in Ward three, very similar number, probably around nine hundred and fifty. If you're in Ward four, you're looking at seven hundred, you're looking at six hundred, sorry. In Ward seven, there's four hundred and fifty votes. And if you're in Ward nine on the south side where we're at right now, that number is only about three hundred and eighty. And what's, you know, those are just numbers I'm throwing out there. What's very interesting about that is that every ward is split into two precincts and every precinct has about the same number of voters in every precinct. That's just how wards and precincts are cut up. And so that's, it should be very similar people voting because that's how many registered voters there are. It's just in the south side. There's just so little engagement and the farther north you go, the more that number rises.
And so associated very highly with like renter population as well. Like other coincidence, where nine has the most renters, has lowest voter engagement. And then in places where even it's like very close to fifty fifty, I think Ward five has slightly more renters than homeowners. Board one has like almost exactly fifty 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 renters and homeowners. Still elections dominated by homeowners and which have very conservative relatively people representing their words.
Why not? They've seen the effects that local elections have on their lives. They keep their property values down. They now.
Keep them high.
Yeah, yeah. Residents tax as well.
And it keeps the city looking the way that people like.
Yeah, yeah, their streets look great. That's not actually true.
Well, I mean, it's more that it keeps things like the Carson break that type of design.
I'm sure of course, definitely.
The people who get appointed by people who are, you know, like that in council are gonna do the things that they like to say.
So yeah, definitely excited for the selection. There's three preliminaries happening in September. You know, everyone's got their eye on at large. Who's gonna get knocked off and to see how the playing field is looking. I'm very curious to see how that goes. With the introduction of George, as well as Paul Brasco throwing his hat in the ring, it becomes much harder for the non incumbents to win. I'm really hoping for them, but they have an uphill battle. If you would, you know, any of these candidates excite you, if Lizzie Gallas excites you, if they all in Ward three excites you, if even Ward nine, any of the large candidates, Emma Emily, Jonathan Paz, if his is his literature excites you, you have to get involved in these kinds of things. They are non incumbents. Cards stacked against them. You need to be reaching out to them, see how you can help. Either donate money. Canvassing for doors is the most important part. I understand that that is a big ask for some people. Just, you know, just go to one of these campuses. Don't even candidates. Just go and just get acclimated to the environment. Just get a feel for it, you know, socialize with these kind of folks.
Not time. Yeah, to go outside, hang out with people. Yeah, the weather isn't terrible. Even if it is, you get to commiserate with people about it.
Yeah, for real. Get off the internet, touch some grass.
Yeah, and it's all that pressure thing like when you knock on doors, you don't have to like convince people to vote for the candidate you're knocking on doors for. Because by far the most common reaction I have when I knock on doors is, oh, I didn't know we had an election this year. So just like letting people know that, oh, there is something to vote for. Upswing participation, very important for non incumbents. And B, you know, the candidate you're canvassing for is the first name they hear about this upcoming election. Really good to have, you know, just the first impression. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, really valuable you not on doors. If you have the time to volunteer, all candidates for search for volunteers. Yeah.
One hundred percent. It's a tall ask right now.
This is a busy election season.
Very busy. I'm excited about that. Moving on. Start with a high that's kind of a low Moody Street shutdown. You know, I will say that I'm happy anything happened. I'm happy that it's shut down or, you know, I really wanted to reverse my language. It's really opened up, you know, it's opened up to any juice, you know, without a car. And so I think if the neighborhoods weren't mobilized, if they weren't speaking out at these public meetings, if they weren't calling counselors, they weren't calling the mayor. I think the mayor would have done away with that completely. And there would be cars right now going up and down Moody Street. But I think because people mobilized, because people got organized and they did things. We got something at least. So I'm gonna start. I'm gonna start with that as a high. And then I'm immediately gonna follow that up with a low, which is the city is not taking it seriously now. On the Moody Street shutdown. There are other cities across the country that have entire committees for their pedestrianized streets. They take it very seriously. They're excited. They're enthusiastic about this. But Janet McCarthy is just is not enthusiastic about this project. And when it when it happened at the time, you know, we talked about the idea of, is this intentionally bad? Is this, are they going about this in such a way that no one is gonna be happy and then next year, no one will be excited about it? And no one will write letters and no one will get organized and mobilized and so they can just do away with this?
In that vein, like I was remembering when we were first talking about this, that like how there's a lot of stuff that has to get done now because that didn't have to get done before because they've previously been done as like one big thing that was that all the restaurants that wanted to have streets, they signed on to. And now every single one has to apply separately. So in the first few weeks of it, like there were a bunch of places that didn't have stuff out. I remember like Colleen specifically got one of the one of the store owners engaged in that because they didn't really know how to approach the full city process for it. It's 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 adding extra bureaucratic hurdles for something that doesn't really need to be there and it's nice that it's happening and really glad Moody Streets like pedestrianized again and I hope that it is better next year.
Yeah, I mean, really sad because we're not setting ourselves up for this next year because like a big discussion during the Moody Street like public hearings and discussions this spring was, hey, let's collect data. Let's plan for the future. So that way we can go into next year with a better idea of what works, what doesn't. Um, I think Jonathan Paz came up with like a proposal that would escape that. And then the mayor gave lip service when she, you know, did her about face and started saying like, oh, okay, actually we can. I do have the power to open up the street. But it's not happening. At least not that I've heard of. We're gonna go into next year, the exact same as it was this year, which is you know, there being no data or information to back up, you know, what is successful, what is how businesses are impacted. It's just gonna be the same discussion. Yeah, and really the only things that's gonna affect it is like, you know, who's in power making the decision? Because otherwise it's just gonna be the same noise.
It'll be the same Joe bizarre who during all of these discussions, I love you Joe. But I'm saying, you know, anecdotally that he during the pedestrianized Moody Street last year, you know, we often saw nobody on the utilizing it. But it's just like that's such that's so anecdotal and you know, at what time of the day is he talking about, you know, what cars wouldn't you really be there anyway? And all of these things, it's just going to be the anecdotes of the people that are in power just making that decision. If people aren't mobilized, hopefully they will be.
And also like the the fact that that was even like a thing that had like the fact that the determination is even being made in the traffic commission is kind of like a problem in and of itself because this is like a city asset, you know, like the pedestrianized portion of the city.
Yeah, this should be an economic development.
Yeah, but yeah, the traffic commission is not like prioritizing anything related to that. Their priorities and cars getting from one place to the other as fast as possible. They're not gonna have any kind of like an open mind towards the pedestrianized street. And the fact that the decision was punted to them means that that's what the mayor wanted to happen, you know?
Yeah.
That's just what it comes down to.
Yeah, I think they do have to sign off on it, but yeah, I didn't have to end with that.
Yeah, it didn't have to be driven by that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is a plus though, because like, as you said, the original plan mayor came out at the beginning of the series saying, no pedestrian no pedestrian movie street and took a lot of organizing and pause bringing up imposing plans for and calling for blood for the mayor to say, okay, actually, I'll do a little bit.
And now there's people getting on Moody Street right now.
Yep.
Walking around on their bikes. So I'm happy about that, but I'm also not happy that the city is not taking this seriously. We should have events all the time on it. Why are we waiting for the businesses and nonprofits to do something? The city should be actively doing this. And I understand they do a little bit. I don't wanna say none because they, I don't, it doesn't matter. They do a couple of things, but they do. They're not taking it seriously. They're not taking this.
Yeah, but the city does love not doing things.
Yeah.
And to bring up con was with the budget, I do strongly like believe in what Colleen said and the video we posted to our site. And like what she said of like why she voted no on the budget, which is just because you know, the current status quo for the administration and especially it's reflected in the budget is just doing bare minimum, do slightly less every year. Anytime a hiring position opens up instead of, you know, rehiring that person, how about we just cut the budget instead? Which is just this gradual, very unnecessary austerity that leads to very ridiculous things where the actual load that I'm getting up to is the fact that we don't really have a functional planning department right now. While things about to go through a lot of big changes, it has to go through a lot of big changes. Both because of the MBK communities act, meaning we'll be zoning for more dense housing. And just generally, there's a lot of access for bike infrastructure, both these things like, you know, affecting how a city is built and designed for people is normally headed up by a planning department and we don't currently have a functional planning department. We currently have our law department looking at zoning changes. Which is ridiculous. The law department themselves have been saying like, hey, we're not professionals on this. We don't have, we don't know how to work with any of the software. Like they're learning the bare minimum right now, trying to comply with this law, much less complying with law in a way which is like thoughtful and which will like increase the quality of life for most people. So.
It feels like when you have a hammer, everything wants to nail. The water department takes care of it, but like, or that, yeah. Not not very told for the job.
Yeah, yeah, we're losing out a lot on a lot of like qualified people making our city better because our mayor has like defunded so much of our city to the point where it's just running on fumes. Yeah. And this also came up, sorry, so stuck on the planning department especially. Because I'm just brushing through so many lows right now. The master plan committee. They held a meeting that was not publicized beyond just a piece of paper on the message board, which we just barely missed. So it went unrecorded, un-witnessed. And the only thing they recommended out of that master plan meeting was to ditch the bicycle committee. Like it's a meeting. Yeah, it would it would have been ad hoc thing. So it would have been like citizen and city counselors by committee. Yeah, and that's, yeah, so that's now in the can. Which sucks because I was emailing my my ward counselor, Joey LaCava, who has previously spoken in favor of blue bikes and bicycling generally. I'm like, hey, what's up with that? I saw that you voted against us having a bicycle meeting. He said, oh, well, that's the role of the planning department. So planning department can take care of that. But we don't have a planning department, right? We have like two, we have like two, two or three people in our planning department currently that are just like, you know, they're not able to like take on more tasks such as like bicycle infrastructure or zoning. And so long as we have this emaciated playing department, things aren't gonna get done. Things aren't gonna get nicer. Yeah.
Yeah, most, most other cities, I'm sure with actual functioning planning departments also have a bike and pedestrian advocacy committee. But our city, which does not have that committee and also does not have a planning, a robust planning department. Apparently it's just is going to like, well, any department decide for that. I also had a low as the master plan committee because we've been following it so closely for a year and a half now. We've been doing this for a year and a half. And yeah, just just so low to for the one thing that happened this session.
It was particularly noise because apparently it happened on literally the first day I went on vacation.
Yeah. So this committee that is developing a master plan for all of wall fam, which is what people have been talking about for a while. We talked about planning. And I always have the anecdote that planning only gets talked about during the election season for, you know, during that time, everyone's like, we need a robust planning department. We need a city planner, one person, one person whose sole job is to play in a wall thing. And then when the election is over, we don't talk about it anymore. I think this year with like the urban planning crowd kind of getting more involved, we've been talking a little bit more about planning during the off 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 years, which has been nice. But this is now that season where everyone talks about planning in the city. So we're gonna see a lot about that. Hopefully, as I said, every license, hopefully something happens. This this time, hopefully people follow through with this talk about needing a better planning department. But I it's just, that's what happens every year.
But yeah, this is following up though for the master plan committee. Correct me if I'm wrong on the date, but this is following up on a master plan that was starting to be formed in the beginning of McCarthy's tenure in like two thousand six, which also they could completed. So basically like throughout the entirety of like the past twenty years of like all the time McCarthy's been in office, like we haven't had a master plan. They almost started and then nothing came of it. And then here we are picking it up again almost twenty years later.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure the idea of a master plan has been talked about for a long time and I don't know.
I think some of the stuff that didn't happen, but it was a question that previous master plan did actually get done. It's just it was like reconciling like those plans. It was like reconcile what didn't get done, I think.
Well, that's good to hear. Actually, that's good to hear because I've gone through other more recent like city like planning documents. There was a transportation master plan that was made in twenty seventeen. This is also a master plan, but there was an ad hoc committee on affordable housing that released a plan in twenty twenty on what the city should do to address affordable housing.
The Fernal had one as well.
Fernal had one and nothing has been done in regards to any of those. Like I have read through all of the affordable housing plan. Zero of the items on that list are addressed.
And the city patted themselves on the back when they released that. They were they were so happy to put in affordable housing committee in and then.
They're like, oh, we talked about it for a year. We thought about it really hard and we're not gonna do anything, but we thought about it.
It's like a be affordable housing trust fund to only gets used, you know, it's like, you don't literally know how.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was really upset about the master plan committee. Really hoping that this committee in the next session, when there's like new committee members has very transparent, very enthusiastic meetings where, you know, the the residents of wall fan can go and listen to what they're talking about instead of like this weird like behind closed doors via email, talking about the master plan committee. But talking about the master plan of all town and also like just a low that they're like being so untransparent about hiring consultants. Like I have no idea what the hell they're talking about. And for anyone that doesn't, that knows less about that is the master plan committee did input hearings in all the boards and then canceled one at large. And yeah, the one the citywide one. And they got all this good information about what the people wanted. Spoiler alert, it was mostly like ninety percent all in every single ward about pedestrian and bike safety and advocacy, which is not an exaggeration.
North Walton was coming out like, hey, it's dangerous for us to step out off of our driveway.
Yeah, Tripolo was complained about specifically.
Yeah, even though, yeah, even the words where you wouldn't think that would happen. That is what most people talked about. And so the idea was floated during these hearings to hire consultants to look at all the data they're gathering, which is also terrible data anyway. Any consultant is gonna look at this and be like, what the fuck are you talking about? How are we gonna, what are we gonna do with this?
Not systematic, none of that.
And yeah, it wasn't advertised correctly for any real data gathering professional to take seriously and whatever. That's besides the point. That's another one. But it seems like now they are actually going to hire consultants to look at this outdated information now. It's been like a year. And we and we the residents of all them have no idea what what's happening. What what do you consulting with them about and what's gonna come of it? I have no idea.
Because I think their answer to to us to like, what are they gonna consult about is literally everything because they have kicked literally everything to master plan committee.
Except for the bike and pedestrians committee, ad hoc committee.
Which is, which they decided they didn't have to talk about.
Yeah.
They didn't have to consider that. Definitely a low for me.
Yeah. I also think it partially comes like their knee jerk reaction to asking us, asking them to do anything is, oh, we'll hire consultants to do it. Is the fact that city government currently is so emaciated through unnecessary austerity that normally, normal things that, you know, a city government could do on its own, like rezoning. They're like, ah shit, we don't have anyone to do that. I guess we'll say we're gonna hire a consultant.
Yeah, it's always it's always a convenient answer.
Yeah.
With the with the timeline of whenever they get around to cutting the check for the person, maybe. Kind of related to the that I had like kind of with a high and a low related to the discussion of like the the rat problem in the city and also corresponding to the trash problem. So like, I'm glad that they're the at the end past was there has passed the resolution about the getting less lethal of redenticide and stuff, but at the same time, one of the more concrete ways to have the rat problems with food supply for the thing and going after the trash. Way to that's coming along and it was just very frustrating to see her pushing back on Michael Chason, the CPW.
And you just talked about it a minute ago. How are you doing with that trash enforcement in terms of, you know, getting people to start put trash in barrels with lids?
So I think it was good until about two days ago when Ron retired and now so, you know, Ron was out there. He had switched going from putting trash out early to concentrating on people that weren't using barrels. So I know.
So the plan is to still continue to do that, but you have to fill the position or pivot someone in the in the department. But we we know if we don't work on the trash piece, the the rap piece is is gonna continue to be where it's at. So the plan is to continue to do that, right?
Or you go do carts and then you don't have to worry about people putting them in their own barrels because they're given a barrel.
Right, but that's like, we just talked about that. I I wanna be able to get through the summer. And you know, we have future, future, right? We'll always talk about the future here and dream a little dream, but I wanna just make sure that 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 enforcement is continuing and you do have a plan for that.
Yeah, I'll just say this. I know future, future, but if it doesn't happen, like the issue is never gonna go away. We can't enforce people to do things they don't wanna do. And when, if there aren't barrels that they're given with covers, the problem is never gonna end. You're giving them the option like here, you don't have an option. This is what you need to use. This will keep the rats away. Other cities are blaming us because they have those carts. We don't. So until that changes, that's that's your answer.
We're fighting an uphill battle.
Yeah, but there's an answer.
I hear.
Pointing out that you know, in six months from now, if we do this, if we pursue the the program to get everyone up in for recycling, like the blue recycling or for for trash, like the blue recycling bins we already have in six months, we could already have it. And that was sort of presented as an unacceptable sort of path forward. And what can we do for the summer? I want something now. And there's no short term solution. You need to do concrete things that change of how like what the physical situation is on the ground. You can't just, you know, do more enforcement and have it fix a problem, you know, have sending one guy out to do enforcement for a city of sixty thousand people. It doesn't make sense. You have to approach it systematically and you know, yes, it's good to not have poison getting thrown out for whatever animals, but so you need to not have trash being left out and hey, look, this lets us qualify for grants that we can otherwise get. So then this is how you should build up on that year over year and build more, more of a robust city as opposed to an all steer one.
Yeah, one hundred percent. Michael Chason. Yeah, Michael Chason, CBW director, not a city counselor. He was a high. Hearing him speak, just a very practical answer, a very obvious answer to a problem was just great to hear. Very obvious answer to a problem was just great to hear. Oh, so here's city councilor's pushback on it, but you know. Often the problems we face are not new problems and there are already um solutions that other people have figured out. We just gotta go along with it and oftentimes there is funding attached.
I'm gonna put a picture of this up on the screen. While I was on vacation, I was in Italy and they have. Trash containers for. Like to deal with like rats in cities and they're underground and people just, you know, they'll be a container buried underground. That can then get pulled up out of the ground when it's full by a truck and then carted away like garbage truck and instead of having like. A garbage day every day of the week, it's picked up from those locations whenever they're full. I have to assume like there's some sort of. System for that, but.
That is very cool.
Like it it the buried under the ground, rats can't get into it and instead of having everyone have their own personal trash bin on the curb, it's set up like that in some places. There's other solutions, just a question. And I mean like, and we're the only city that doesn't have a limit on our trash that we throw out, throw out.
It's true.
In our in our immediate.
Yeah.
Uh one of the highs for me was at the very, very beginning of the session. Um I thought it was particularly hilarious when Paul Kates voted against himself becoming chair.
Yeah, so so es- essentially what's gonna happen is that. Uh calling Bradley MacArthur and George Darcy attempt to vote for. Uh Paul Kates to be the chair of the committee instead of uh Vidal and. If if Kates had voted for himself, he would have been. So, let's see.
I nominate Carlos Vidal.
Okay, uh Councilor McLaughlin.
I nominate Paul Katz.
I second the nomination of Councilor Vidal.
Point of order. We don't have a second in our council rules.
Colleen Bradley MacArthur.
Counselor Katz.
Counselor Darcy.
Counselor Katz.
Counselor Katz.
Counselor Vidal.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Councilor Vidal.
Counselor Vidal.
Counselor Carlos Vidal.
Thank you. What's hilarious about the clip is that. Is that Paul like tried to tried to stammer, he says that he wants to. Wants to second the motion for Carlos. That is not how the Walton City Council works at all. He's Paul's been in many of these meetings. He knows that seconds aren't a thing. In Walton City Council uh but it's just hilarious that if he had voted for himself, he would have been the chair. Like Carlos like thanks the committee for their confidence, but there there's overwhelming confidence that. Paul should have been the chair of that as well uh which is hilarious.
Uh and of course, you know, he can do, you know, he's gonna say he didn't wanna be chair. He, you know, he trusts Vidal uh and wants to do that, but I just thought it was hilarious. Absolutely hilarious, um especially because on the on the wrap up session. Uh last time, I made a prediction that Paul was going to flounder as a city councillor. Um I believe I use that word. Um and then the very next thing that he was able to do was block himself from becoming the chair of a of a committee.
I I think I can understand him not wanting to rock the boat with other councillors he gets along with, but also like I I guess this would have been something for him. That would have been helpful for him politically to have, you know, here's a thing I'm doing.
Hmm.
But I guess it's also. This is a thing that Carlos has been doing for several years now, so it probably would have just been, it would have been antagonistic to him to have gone through with it. It was still funny that he had to vote against himself.
Yeah, blocked himself. Uh speaking of Vidal, one of the lows of my entire city council experience this past past six months was his was his comments. During the budget hearings, trying to get certain committees that are meeting over Zoom to meet in person. That was a particularly low point for me.
And now why are you still meeting via Zoom? While most of our commissioners and boards in this body itself, we're meeting in person now. I think you and. Conservation Commission are the only, for some reason.
I believe the CPC is also.
Yeah, CPC, you're right. I did talk to.
On on Zoom.
Mr. Barrett yesterday.
And the the reason is is uh well, there are a number of reasons. I think we mentioned this last time. That that uh first of all, that room uh in the basement. Where we meet uh is very closed and so uh it's not well ventilated. Um and it has a much higher uh potential for transmittal of of. Come on, you know of what?
Covid, you mean?
Covid, yes.
Covid, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure what you were referring to because you guys met there before Covid happened, correct?
Yes, we met there before Covid.
Are you looking for a new place?
However, however, let 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 me say that that there are advantages to meeting on Zoom, especially for a commission like the historical commission. There's documentation. Which the members need to see and the public. Needs to see and it's much easier to see that on Zoom when you're sharing documents on Zoom. Than it is before people would come into the room and and a developer would put. Some kind of board up at the front of the room and people couldn't see. In fact, it's impossible to have it angled. So both the commission can see it and the public can see it, whereas this way, everybody can see the documentation. So so there are some advantages to to working on Zoom.
Now. Going back to your statement about the room not being ventilated enough. Therefore, there's a higher level of people getting Covid. Are you looking into a different room where so you can start meeting in person moving forward?
Um well, the the uh the auditorium.
Okay.
In government center on Monday nights and unfortunately, we meet on Monday nights is you know, opposite the the commission, so we can't meet in here. Opposite the council, so we can't meet in here and and Monday nights, so the the Waltham Philharmonic rehearses. In 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 the auditorium. So I don't think you want us kicking out the Philharmonic, so. Um so so that's a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I did look into that and and as a possibility, but but unfortunately, we can't do that.
So you there's no way you're gonna go back in person because of the room then?
Well, not not at this point. I mean, if if something could be done about that room, then then fine, but. I mean, that room is is, you know, it's it's very hot and and otherwise we'll have to have the windows all open in the middle of winter. Letting all that energy out, so.
Okay. Well, I guess I will talk to the mayor because I think I need this commission to meet in person. I think everyone should be meeting in person. The reason being, and I'll tell you why. When we when we meet in person, I I I'm in the line of business in which body language says a lot. When you speak to a board and the respect that you pay to the board when you're in front of them. It's the same way how you are dressed in front of us today because you're meeting in front of our. The finance committee. I think that says a lot about the petitioner or the person presenting in front of you. Uh and body language is a lot about how you are presenting your case. Rather than being in a video caller on a phone with no video whatsoever. So I I definitely, I talked to the Conservation Commission and talked to Mr. Barrett. Last yes uh last Thursday about it. Uh I think it's important to uh to stop meeting in person.
Low because like he didn't give a good reason. There was no good reason, like during his talking points, he never talked about like. Like what being in person, like how that would benefit the committee at all? And he was just like. I prefer committees meeting in person. I think that's professional. Those are the standards I wanna live by. That's just a shitty thing to say. As you know, you've got committees that are doing their due diligence, they're doing everything that the city requires of them, they're doing it well. Um and then so to just say, I want you to change it up completely. Uh alienating disabled folks and other and other folks and just making it much less accessible uh just because. You feel entitled to that, you feel entitled to be able to tell people how they. Do their own committees is just, it was so gross to me and so ableist and uh particularly.
Once again, though, shout out to the people who aren't city council, speaking at city council. Uh the historical commission dude who was speaking um. And he pushed back against Carlos and he gave very good reasons for them to be remote. Yeah, it's easier, it's more accessible, it's easier to share documentation, it's easier to give presentations. Um. There are a lot of good reasons. They're doing their job better than they. I mean, based on his, they're doing their job better than they would be if it wasn't person simply because it is better designed that way.
Yep, and I think the conservation mission too, it said that like they've got a lot of people that attend the meetings that are like engineers and do stuff all over the state. And it's just more convenient to share documents on a Zoom call with everyone and more convenient to attend without anybody necessarily physically be there. Yeah, I mean, like for me personally, as an engineer, like I much prefer meetings. I don't have to drive to go to get to.
Michelle Phil Moser from uh. The Conservation Committee and what I guess Isaacson from the Historical Committee, they both did a great job, sorry about that, but. I think they're gonna, I think Carlos is gonna get his way. Uh we'll see, um but. I, you know, because Robert's rules, which is the rules that the city council has to do nearby, this is like. It makes it very hard to push back on people. Um and so there was there's no discussion about it. They all said his shitty comment. And it uh you know, they said words back and then that was pretty much it, you know, nobody spoke about it. Uh the mayor spoke a little bit about. Uh later on, much later on, uh about, you know, her decision to. Have them in Zoom versus not, but the vibe I got was that they're gonna be forced to. Hopefully not, I would definitely like to see them remain at Zoom. I'd like to see all city council meetings return to Zoom, all committee meetings return to Zoom, make it much more accessible for everyone. Uh but. Not gonna get that.
It's the problem, it's too accessible.
Yeah, for real.
Um I have a high.
Yeah.
Um very recent uh housing rights certification ordinance um. This is more high on the effort of everyone who organized in favor of it. Um there are very few city councils, I think just George Darcy. Calling Bradley MacArthur and Jonathan Boz, who we're actually like signing on and pushing this in city council, but thanks to all the organization. Uh from a lot of the people watching this and then watch CDC especially. Um you got a citizen in mid hearing, uh there's a lot of momentum around this. Um and it's nice just forcing. Forcing our city councillors to actually acknowledge the housing crisis. There are very few moments where like. In their working lives, our city councillors are actually acknowledging the housing crisis. Either in their personal life because their homeowners who are just trying to see their home values rise or like in their like life as a public official. Where the housing crisis almost never brought up on the city council floor. Uh like we heard this during that preserving residential zone neighborhoods uh bullshit. Uh where they were kicking like short term renters and college students out of single family, but it's zero sympathy, zero thought for what would happen. To the people who are currently living.
For you to continue to do what you do and what building does is that we need to look at that ordinance. And outline and highlight the definition. Of what the single family in our book reads. So that there's no gray area, period.
Uh uh again, and I apologize if I wasn't clear, all of the cases that I have cited, say. Even without a definition. Everyone knows what a single family zoning district is supposed to look, act and live like. But it could not hurt, as I said. To address some of the attempted excuses some of these people have tried to use.
Um. Like the city councils don't give a shit, but currently like we are foreseeing our city council to at least talk about it. Uh and listen to us, which is great. There's a lot of great momentum there. Uh fighting for the rights of renters especially.
I think like when they, you can hear it in the rhetoric, some of the councillors when they talk about the situation where they're like referring to people as like. Taxpayers of Walton and stuff or versus residents of Walton, as if the people that. Live in Walton and pay rent, pay rent to a landlord aren't also taxpayers or contributing to the tax base in the city.
We're just asking that you provide photocopy, putting pieces of paper that someone else has already translated. The tw- the housing rights notification ordinance accomplishes these modest, modest, modest goals. These are modest goals. Fifty percent of Walton are renters.
And I think that there's a lot of that. And I think that for me, it was definitely like a low seeing just the number of. Like chart the amount of turnout for the, you know, in opposition to the very simple notification ordinance. If they're gonna react like it's rent control over notification ordinance, then they've already like, you know. They've not really.
They weren't even acting like, they were acting like it was the total decomodification of housing.
And I don't really understand how can you just single up one industry. I mean, if if you have the power to do such a thing. Does that mean you have the power to shut any industry down from their customer pay? You guys have the power to say that. Citizens of Walton don't pay for food anymore. Go to the grocery store, get whatever you want. I don't know why, how, I I I'm really asking questions, I don't mean to answer them. Where does where does the line get drawn? Do you have the power to say that we don't have to pay our mortgages? Gasoline.
There's no rent, people living here for free. That's what this ordinance is doing. It was insane, like.
It's the concept, it's like you gotta keep your powder dry. You don't need to go out immediately like that. And it's just like, it 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 doesn't look good. Especially with rent and then the housing situation the way that it is, to be pushing back in that way on such a basic thing, like it's not. That controversial and then. And I think that it made all, it was not a, as they say, it was not a good look for a lot of these landlords. And and also, it was, we not to harp on this, but. In terms of like the actual like comments submitted, it was, there was far more people that actually put their name on the record in support of that ordinance and like. Gave testimony in support of it. It was just the hand raising, there was a, that was heavily in favor of the landlords, so. That will be, that was not discussed before the summer session. They had the opportunity to and they punted it until fall. So we'll be seeing that again potentially in August, yeah.
So yeah, that um. Yeah, they decided in the last city council meeting to uh table the item. It was uh the first opportunity. And the last one uh for the summer session to chat about the. The ordinance, um and they, yeah, like James said, they decided against it, so sometime, you know. It could happen in August when the special meeting occurs. It could happen in September when it when it uh comes back to session. But because this is an election year, I think there's gonna be quite a few people that wanna do everything in their power to wait until the election is over. Uh to make this happen. And then there's gonna be several people that wanna do everything in their power to make it happen before the election season. Because everything is politicized right now. And so I'm very curious to see, that will definitely be coming up uh. Either at the special meeting in August or immediately in September um. I'm very curious to see what happens with that. Yeah, I mean, one of my lows was the uh. Was the comments made at that meeting, it's just so, so low and just so.
I have a ninety eight year old German woman. She came here in nineteen fifty six with two children and a husband. She speaks beautiful English, beautiful English. If you wanna help the immigrant or anybody, make sure they can speak English. There's plenty of resources out there. This notification thing is crazy. Thank you very much.
Not ignorant in the sense that it's like gross, but ignorant in the sense that you didn't read what the ordinance was. So many.
I would be embarrassed to go out there like that, like, oh my.
Just like, yeah, I don't know if like somebody said like, hey, they're initiating rent control in Walton. You need to speak out against it, but just like. So many people were saying, I own property in Walton. If this goes through, how am I gonna pay my mortgage? My brother in Christ, the ordinance is how you pay your mortgage. It's it's getting the resources for for. For raft, for for just like helping pay your rent. That is how you pay your mortgage. If it's not like. Yeah, it's it's wild to me.
Also, like showing up with a sob story about how this is gonna destroy your business, doesn't, isn't making you do a case that you're like an incompetent administrator of the property.
I'm here in opposition of this movement um that um. As you may notice, I'm a younger individual. I I I did my part. Put together my down payment and actually was able to, with a friend, afford a two family in Walton. Without the unconditional income of rent, a two family is no longer affordable.
No, it's just.
Yeah.
In terms of things that were ignorant in the gross way of things, going back a little further on. Which was a while ago, so um but. When city council had their discussions around the MBTA meetings at. A lot of ignorant and a gross way comments from city councillors. You had, I think Kate first brought it up and then a couple other city councillors also decided to talk a little bit about it. About how, oh, if we're required to build housing, how about we just take out our current um. Our current like public, public housing tenants, which they did say, oh, just kidding. Uh but it's still a really fucked up thing to bring up.
Or why don't we remove the Brandy's T station?
Question that I I just have to ask. And I just have to ask, this isn't, this isn't a, an endorsement of anything. If we were to close one of the transit stations. Let's say we're gonna close Roberts and we will only have one transit station. What does that do to the numbers? Does that do anything?
What it means is that you'd have to have the entire one thousand nine hundred ninety one in the Carter Street area.
But but we wouldn't.
I mean, I don't think we have the authority.
But we wouldn't need four thousand.
Station anyway.
It wouldn't.
Still need three thousand nine hundred eighty.
We still need that same number.
Yes.
Uh huh.
That was the other one.
Mm hmm. Which once again, doesn't change anything, but they're just like, you know, spitballing how they could be pieces of shit.
Yep.
Um, nope. Sorry, that's a bit traumatic.
They were being rhetorical, but why would they even?
I stand by it. Who wasn't being rhetorical was Kathleen, or not Kathleen, um Kathleen McMiniman. Um. Who, um. I'd like to reshare the video from like years ago where she went on this like insane conspiratorial like uh. The, our, the libs are coming for our Christine suburbs rant.
Direction, and if you think this is bad, you wait till the federal government. Under the decree that's going to be given to us. To get rid of the suburbs and create urban areas. And fairness will take place.
Yeah, yeah, uh but a little bit of that came out during that MBTA communities act city council discussion as well. Uh when it was this, this very like, uh I think it's like a Yogi Berra, uh like, ah, no one's gonna wanna live here because there will be too many people. You know, there's so many people that it's unpopular. Cause it's so popular if we build more houses and more people can live here. It was just this like very like evident like disdain for the idea of any new people living in wall fam.
Just very circular to, in a way, because like. It, it, it. You can't have a growing city if you don't have more housing built, like it just doesn't work otherwise.
I mean, we, we do have a growing city. They're bringing tons of workers. They're bringing tons of workers to wall fam. We have like. Millions of square feet of commercial development bringing. Like a total of like ten thousand workers to wall fam over the span of a decade. We're not holding houses, then those ten thousand people are just displacing the people who are currently here.
Yep.
Just, just in like the span, like just in the time that I've like lived here, the rent has gone up like astronomically. It's like unbelievable. And when I moved to wall fam, it had the lowest rent out of like, you know, Weston Lexington and now it is like higher.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, is the MBTA's community act a higher or lower session?
Uh, I would call it a high something because, because nothing good came out of it um so far. Uh but it forced the healthsters to talk about it. I think it's good to have our elected officials actually talking about the housing crisis. Cause it is genuinely just like the last thing from their mind. Um, like so many people, like I think Bill Haley on his campaign website, I was checking out his housing policy because he responded to me a bit on housing discussions. Uh so I looked up his campaign website and the only thing he had talking about the housing crisis. In wall fam wasn't talking about housing crisis, it would say, hey. It was his policy position being, hey, we need homes to grow in value. We need housing to get more expensive. That was the only thing he said about it. Um. So with that in mind, um. You know, just another reason to vote, especially like if you are a renter. Um. Because our current like elected officials and some of the new runners like Will Handley, like. Genuinely, you are so far in the back of their mind. Um.
You are, you are there first of all, yeah.
Yeah, there, you are so far removed from what they care about, because they just care about housing getting more expensive. So that way their home value grows, uh whereas everyone else is suffering because. Home values are rising, you know, housing is getting more expensive.
That's just class war, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I have the opportunity to talk to the guy running against uh Kate's and Ward Seven and.
Robert Davis.
Robert Davis, and he also is of the mind that he just wants to return to the way things were. Specifically in the time window bef- before. Or, or, or rather after um the streetcars got taken away. After that, but before, I guess, like. Something happens, but, but definitely cars on the road, definitely suburban sprawl. But none, none of that's free cars, none of that density.
Oh yeah, no, anytime any, anyone in Old Wall fam's nostalgic, it's always for nineteen forties to nineteen seventies.
Yep.
Uh when white flight was happening, you know, most of all, it was getting deforested for single family neighborhoods.
Yep.
Um, when it became a legal, legal total law of dense housing with exclusionary zoning laws. Um, that is, that is what they're reminiscing on.
Yeah, it's not Old Wall fam, which was all farmland and women workers uh unionizing. Uh they mean, they mean um white flight.
Yeah, which is very funny when you also think of things, I think you brought this up, um. We're even talking about like so many disparate things, not even to the degree of like, you know, the way our exclusionary neighbors are designed, but just uh. In regards to something as simple as bicycle infrastructure, I think you were, one of y'all said Kathy and Harris when discussing bike, um. Bike parking, bike racks on Moody's Street. She was like, oh, bike racks wouldn't uh fit on the actual Moody's Street because it doesn't fit with historical character.
Yeah.
Uh when bikes have been, people have been biking on Moody's Street far longer than they have been driving on Moody's Street, um.
And also, yeah, cars are not historical.
Yeah, I know. Whenever people talk about like old wall fam, like you turn to that, it's only ever that brief period.
Yeah, it was, it was when them and their parents lived in wall fam.
That make wall fam great again.
I, I wanna go back to when I personally was fourteen years.
Yeah, um on one of our debriefs, very recently, I asked what your predictions for MBTA communities act was. Have you put any more thought into it?
Do you, what do you? We have no predictions, especially because um we don't have any professional planners or.
How long would the state give us until they're like, yo, do something?
Oh yeah, so the absolute deadline for enacting zoning changes is December thirty first of twenty twenty four. Uh so.
To, to finish, to be at the end, to exact.
To reason, to like pass the laws.
Interesting.
Uh which means in like. No way. Like anything's happening before the end of it.
Yeah.
Like they're gonna, they'll also last minute for sure. Um.
It'll be the last city council.
It can have a huge impact on what wall fam will look like in the future, how affordable wall fam will be based on this election. So yeah, I have no idea of any predictions of what will happen.
I mean.
Um but it will be hugely influenced by this election. So if you want a more affordable and more inclusive wall fam, like vote for people who are talking about that. Uh and do not vote for, oh, yeah, don't vote for Jeanette McCarthy. I mean, that's not a.
And also not even just voting, but just being aware, being engaged. Uh yeah, I mean, if you've not watched our show before, you don't know MBTA's communities act, there's. We have to rezone for four thousand units by right. And we're gonna have, the city council is gonna have some say in it. I, it's, it's.
Oh, the city council actually has one hundred percent say.
One hundred percent, yeah, I think one hundred percent to up or down or?
No, one hundred percent to draft every.
To draw, okay.
Oh yeah, I think then like the fifties through seventies period. By the way, make wall fam great again, that time period. Um, the one thing they did do really good was um public housing creation. Um.
Because it wasn't illegal yet.
Yeah, I mean, that, and actually they just cared, um apparently. Um.
Yeah.
So yeah, stay involved, stay engaged, uh because this, this is going to be a very important time in wall fam, very important.
Oh, and also for the, it's four thousand new units by right, but like, it isn't necessarily. It, it's, it's a lot of the, a lot of the units that are in the areas that need to get increased are. Already relatively dense, they're just not prohibited by our existing zoning and a lot of the zoning is just about.
I mean, Warren Dale, I wouldn't say dense at all.
No, yeah, so this could look a lot of different ways. Like if wall fam chooses, if our city counselors choose to just like rezone south side. That's just gonna lead to a lot of teardowns and replacement, because you're basically replacing what currently exists with the exact same density, only newer and therefore more expensive. If we choose to rezone all our uh like commercial industrial land. Where currently there's only like office buildings and parking lots, you know, that's, you know, a bunch of new housing, not displacing anyone.
Yeah.
Uh they could rezone Lotus Neighbors, like single family, because you just see a lot more integration where lower, lower income families are actually able to live. In places where previously, you know, you have to be able to own a, you have to be able to afford an eight hundred thousand dollar house to live there, right?
And also like if the north side had more density in that way, it would all. Related to some of the other things that have been going on with like the uh the busing or the bus situation. There would then be more of a case to have buses option more involved than if there was more density located there because it's like. Housing's getting distributed up there and whatever.
Yeah, uh yeah, actually, I would like to throw this in just since you brought it up. Um, there are a lot of things that influence where transit gets placed. Um, but the number one thing that influences transit ridership more even than like the level of service. Is whether people, a lot of people actually live there, you know? I hear a lot of complaints from North Wall fam about, hey, why don't we have bus service? Uh it's because there are enough people to justify it. It's just a bunch of like eight hundred thousand dollar single family homes up in North Wall fam. Um, I mean, the MBTA is not gonna prioritize those neighborhoods. Over so many other neighborhoods in the greater Boston area that have dense housing, that have large populations of low and moderate income people. Who need transit service, right?
Yeah, and it's also people that have the mindset of, oh, you have to run government like a business and, and like fix it and cut, cutting costs and stuff like that and. It, the, the cost cutting is gonna lead to the things that aren't money, like aren't, you know. Highly used getting reduced because you're trying to. You, you have to triage and. Yeah.
Yeah. With the MBTS communities act with the, the one twenty eight uh remodel, uh wall fam is going to look very different in a decade, very, very different. Um. Speaking of McMiniman, um her weirdly racial comment um during the tenant's rights ordinance was a low for me. Because it was just kind of like mask off.
Councilor House, you have the floor.
I presented this matter. In different language. And the rules and.
Other than English?
With different language, different ordinance language.
But I'm not sure, like I'm trying, you know, I, I try and give people the benefit of the doubt. Was she trying to make a joke? Was she just trying to be dismissive and didn't realize the racial component? I'm just like, I just don't really know what was going through her mind. No, it's, it's so, it was, this is just a disgusting comment. The.
And just unnecessary.
Yeah, unnecessary. Um, and you know, you can, you can go back and forth on if Jonathan was being correct about what he was legislating for there. Um he's going by it in a correct way, but I just, you know, just bringing race into something like this is just disgusting. Really disgusting. Definitely, that was definitely a low point, bringing the city council this session.
I mean, just a lot of tension around the um, the housing resolutions this, this session in general, I think.
No.
But I mean, like. It's worth, worth noting that like, there was the public hearing for that, that we were talking about, the landlord family reunion, but the run up to that involved. A lot of watch showing up to committee meetings with a bunch of people filling up the room until they got heard, you know.
Yeah, literally hundreds of man hours of watch volunteers. Uh.
Yep.
Just showing up for months, for months on end until this was scheduled. It was a lot of work on part of watch CDC. Speaking of city council pussyfooting around, um. A pro, there's also another uh very conditional high is um. The silver house is pretty much guaranteed uh to happen. Uh and it is pretty much guaranteed to happen sometime relatively soon. Because if wall fam tried to delay any longer, it would be considered discrimination. They could maybe be hit with a discrimination lawsuit. Yes, people recovered from addiction by uh like disability protections. And if wall fam tries to put it off any longer than they already have. Uh they could get hit with a lawsuit. Um.
Yeah, and I mean, I was, I was hoping, curious if it would get addressed before the summer break. It got pushed out in summer break. We'll see what happens next.
And where is it right now? Licenses and franchises or?
Uh yeah, so last I heard, um, there was. The. There, there, the neighbors that have an issue were in discussion with the city attorneys, I guess, about. What the agreement will be, so I guess, because there can only be so much of the exact out of this agreement, so they just have to come to terms on what that is.
Yeah, and the silver house person, I think, made it very clear that there won't be any major like changes to like the actual. Make up of the house, does any like major like.
Things that would require going back to the building department, for example.
Yeah, cuz that would, he made pretty clear that would almost certainly be like discrimination by intentionally delaying the process for nobody to see.
Yep. Yep. And you be, making a mountain out of mold, though, like, oh, you have to relocate these stairs or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of those comments were pretty gross too.
Well, it's really love their property values.
To report on them, because at the end of the day, like this is, this is people's lives and like. The city is for everyone, but not just the people that happened to have been buried. Of hucks.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I have one more little listed here, uh the pride resolution. Um, not everyone signing on to the pride resolution was a particular low for me. Um, in um. Two thousand and. Twenty one. Uh, we had the first. Public. Pride, it was in someone's backyard and it wasn't a complete public invitation, but that was like the first time that the city all came together uh for an active pride celebration. Um. And uh. The year before that was the first ever in wall fam's history pride resolution, um sponsored by Christine Mackin, um. And so we're like, we're making progress in elder city councilors, especially in Massachusetts, and especially nowadays, you know, they all have to say, oh, we're one hundred percent complete support. They have to, um, that means that there are some acceptance, like Kathy McMiniman, who actually did not even vote yes on the original. Uh resolution was a roll call and she uh she voted present, uh which is just like crazy. Uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, so this year, um, a very similar pride resolution now, it's an annual thing now, which is great. Um, uh people have to sign on to resolutions if they supported or not, and not everyone did. And uh that was a really low point for me, especially because several of those people came to pride. And it's just like, what are you doing here if you're not gonna sign on and publicly say I support it?
Um, once again, it was just Jonathan cause, Colleen Bradley and Carter and George Garcia, right?
Um.
Oh, Thomas signed on late.
Yeah, yeah, Tom, Tom, Tom Stanley signed on the day of as it was going around. But, and you know, they'll say that it's politicized. They'll say it's politicized, but I mean. Everything is politicized. You signed on, you signed on to a million other things uh this session, uh despite an election year being happened. Like what is it about pride? That uh was too political than what we're talking about people's lives. So we're talking about the safety people feel living in the community. Uh and then to show up to pride after that is, is, is.
Feeling bad about it, yeah. Well, it's also the, the. I mean, they, they can say it's political, but it's also kind of like grade school behavior. It's like if. If Jonathan Paul's, Colleen Bradley and Carter and George Garcia said not to jump off a bridge, would you jump off the bridge?
Yeah.
Like, it's.
I don't really, I don't really get it either.
Well, again, honestly, when talking to some of these counselors, they kinda wanna have it both ways on this kind of thing.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, like I understand tenant's rights ordinance, it's like if that came to a vote. The people will be like, oh, this is very politicized. I'm gonna vote now. Like I couldn't, I could, like, I don't agree with that at all, but I could at least. I understand that. I understand where you think it's too politicized for you. To just vote one way because Jonathan will be able to claim it as a victory. But I mean, Jonathan, Colleen, they've just been supporters of pride. Uh they're not championing it at all. They're not championing it even in the slightest. They're just, and just doing this annual tradition of making a pride resolution. And you're not gonna sign on to it because you're, and you think it's too political.
And also it feels like projection too, that they think it's, that that's a political thing as opposed to just like, you know, a resolution.
Yeah.
Talk about.
Yeah, cuz they're not gonna put it on their literature. Uh that they got a unanimous. Pride resolution through after all their hard work. They just like, they're doing a thing that we've always done uh recently. Um, and uh it was sad for me, uh and the community to not have the entire city council sign on to it.
I was just saying needlessly personalizing the thing too, because it's not like this entire. Like, it's not like the pride is just those three counselors. They really didn't have that much to do with. Like, yeah, at all. Yes, they were asked to present it like constituents.
Yeah.
So that's the. Uh just not a good look for the counselors on that, on that front.
Absolutely not.
This just popped in my head since you were just talking about housing rights certification ordinance, by the way. Um, I still think it'd be more political, like they would be making political if they voted against, just because, um. The housing rights certification ordinance was one of the recommendations by the twenty twenty report from the ad hoc committee on affordable housing. One of the recommendations was, hey, we should have something that guarantees that renters are notified of their rights prior to eviction.
That's what I hear.
Yeah, once again, there are a lot of really good documents that city council and our city government has produced, such as the transportation master plan. And the committee affordable housing report, which have a lot of really good suggestions. I genuinely, I think they're great. Um, it'd be really cool if city council acted on it.
I, I need to double check, I need to fact check myself on this, but on the subject of like things getting done last minute because of the like. The, the uh, the MBTA communities act, I think one of the things listed on our action plan was like improvements to like the bus stations and stuff, like things that were in the works. And that, but now those um bus um. Shelter is already done as a result of that, the problem is a result of that where they previously tabled for a while, which I'm not gonna talk about. That was something that was again presented by Jonathan pause.
That was in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
That long ago, right when you got into city. That was, that was the first project, first project.
And I'm not gonna, I mean, we, we were, at this point, we've, we've referenced this multiple times, but like this is when Kathy and then had talked about this as if it was method on mile or something.
Yeah.
The, 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 fir- first you, you put a place for people to stand outside of the sun while they're reading the bus and next thing you're gonna be using needles and all.
Yeah. Cannot be over a second. There are so many city council are such a disdain.
Yeah.
For anyone who isn't a wealthy homeowner.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Or anyone who like doesn't drive a car. Um.
Yeah.
But there are many city counselors who aren't like that, and it doesn't have to be that way. Please vote, please knock on doors.
Yeah.
There's this, a lot of good people to spend your time working for this year.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't even say, yeah, I mean, doesn't. The way that things are right now is not the way it has to be in the future. And I wouldn't say even that. The way the people that believe and control the way things are right now, or even in the majority, you know. It doesn't have to be a majority of people making decisions, that it's just whoever is more organized. It just comes down to that, together across, across everything or almost. It doesn't have to be a majority of people making decisions. That is just whoever is more ordered. It just comes down to that, you gotta cross, across everything, or almost, almost every. Situation, almost every uh decision. It's just, who's more order? Is it going to be uh the people that? That are conservative, whether Democrat or Republican, to not move Waltham forward in any sense? Uh. Or is it going to be the people that do? And we're gonna, we're gonna see uh what happens.
Yeah, cuz the vast majority of Waltham will not be voting in this election.
Yeah.
Like, all of the work is just finding people and letting them know that, hey, this is what matters. This is why you should vote. We do have an election this year.
Yeah, you guys wanna, you guys wanna predict what our voter count is gonna be in this year?
I do not want to.
Uh, I was gonna say, I'm gonna say twenty-nine percent. And that's, that's pretty high. Oh, wait, it's my goal year.
You're gonna say, you're gonna say thirty-five, forty?
Oh, thirty-five, forty? Oh, my God, that's way too high.
Forty's gonna be exciting, man.
Oh, that would, I mean, I, if it was forty percent, I'd be very happy. I'm gonna say thirty-two percent. Um, and of course, it should also be said that that's thirty-two percent of registered voters. That is not thirty-two percent of the population of Waltham. And so it's just like vast majority of people not voting, vast majority of people thinking that local government has absolutely no effect on their life. Uh and of why, I mean, I understand why they would think that because uh politics doesn't really give a shit about you. Um. Unless you're a small population of people.
And on, in that mind, uh if you think uh. If you think that solar energy is good, uh if you think that environmentally friendly building construction is good. Uh, these are both things that came up in city council. That city council was broadly against uh while our planet is burning.
Yeah.
I don't know why, I mean, we're seven years early trying to do this. I mean, I I don't know.
I mean, that's somebody throwing a dart at a dartboard saying by twenty thirty, we're gonna be fossil fuel independent, but. But that's just United States. What are we doing with the rest of?
Oh, that's Massachusetts.
Okay, so that's Massachusetts. What is the rest of the country doing?
They're following California.
Okay, so we'll have Massachusetts and California and all the states in between. What are they doing?
Yeah, I.
What is the rest of the, what is, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to, thinking out loud now. It's like, what is the rest of the world doing? And I agree. There could be a plan. Because the world shut down. In a matter of three days, the world did. We all got together because there was a massive pandemic and the world was able to shut down in three days. But now to have Massachusetts say, we're gonna do this, but the rest of the country is gonna be like, great, more gas, more oil for us.
Only, the only resolution or ordinance that had anything to do with climate change, it was one thing, then they shot down immediately like that.
Yeah, um, like I know, like. We personally are like, you know, a tiny minority of weirdos. Um. But city council is elected by a tiny minority of weirdos. Uh.
Yeah.
But generally, it's the uh right mean climate and I weirdos.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Would be better if it was the weirdos who, yeah, uh wanna have everyone housed and have us doing something to fight climate change.
That's not what government's supposed to be about. That's literally what people believe. That's insane to me.
Well, I mean, that's, a lot, it it it's like taking for granted that the role of government is to make sure that no, no business owner loses money operating the city or something.
That's, yeah, that's some people's philosophy of government. That's literally what they believe. Okay, well, this has been fun. It's been a year and a half of Channel Seventy-One News, uh moving into our fourth. Uh city council session. I'm uh. Excited to continue doing this. I mean, our videos uh. Are getting more popular every single time we upload them, so more people are watching this uh than ever before. I know a lot of people that don't even agree with us watch our show, which is hilarious. This goes to show that like, there's so little news coverage going on in the city of Waltham. Uh it is so hard to find out what's going on in the city. It's so hard to find out what's going on in the city government and our. You know, you know, like, I like to think I put a lot of effort into this, but it could be. There could be a lot more effort into it. Um but, you know, a lot of people still watch this, uh excited to expand on it, excited to do more. Uh excited to, you know, work with both of you.
A lot of city government is sort of. Feel feels very unapproachable and all of this project has been us trying to make it more approachable, so.
Yeah.
Glad that people are watching.
Okay, we'll see you in August. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
See ya.